Man. They ain't gonna play nothing else. Good. I told them, I told them what they need to do. Commence all the terrible going over in Russia.
Karen, shoot. So Karen, uh, you forward that one.
They get that bad, they get crazy.
Hey, how you doing?
Uh, you see.
Can I put him out? Before, can I put him out before everything gets started? Listen, Joe.
It's amazing, I can't.
I can't believe you changed that quick. Oh, yeah.
I tell you, you're gonna change your mind.
You're sitting there.
It's cold. Yes, it is. Yes, your hands are freezing. Are you better, bro?
Yeah, I'm better.
I'm no.
Oh.
They got right in the coat.
Right.
You just took a little one.
You know what I said?
He's fine, I need a little bit.
Take my hair off, my hair.
Hello, how are ya? When's it gonna snow?
Tonight.
I hope it don't. I think it'll be on Saturday.
Saturday. It should've snowed last Saturday. Especially in Atlanta. It should've froze over.
Yeah.
That was dreadful.
Would've been much different if you'd been in the dome.
Well, that's true.
They played, we didn't even show up.
Yeah. How about me on one of them and buy those tickets? Be that embarrassed? Uh?
Yeah. They probably didn't take twice anyway.
Hey, how you doing?
They're all lined up, they're like. Sun is just beautiful. And warm.
I wanna feed right now. Some of that sand or that I tried to draw.
How you feeling?
It's gonna take.
Barbara hasn't got here yet, but it is five o'clock. Alright, I'm gonna call this workshop, um, to order. And our only business that we're gonna be conducting is on the rec center rules. Okay? Everybody has got a copy, I guess, of the rec center rules? Have y'all had time to look over these rules?
Yes.
I looked at them, yeah, in email.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's, uh, let's talk about, let's just take them. Let's go down through here one at a time and we'll just, we'll just take them. If you have any concerns or anything you wanna say, or.
Where's the hard copy of rec center?
That one that said rec center, right? That's the worst one.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I had a meeting with all the employees at the recreation center. They all weighed in, we discussed every single one. All five of us feel like the rules are good as they are and they are working and they are needed. I've been told that public perception is a problem and I think we do need to work on public perception. Maybe a social media blast, maybe a flyer sent home from the school with the kids. Anything to help with those things that we discussed. But I just wanted to let y'all know that all the employees and their thoughts because one had to work tonight, one had adoption, one wanted to sit. So they all couldn't be here, I wanted them all here, but they all couldn't be.
That's understandable, that's understandable. Alright, let's take this very first one. Alright, where it says you must be a resident of Randolph County, Alabama, to be able to provide proof of residency to use the recreational center facilities. Multiple forms of identification include driver's license, ID card issued by the city, or photo ID in conjunction with a household utility bill in your name. Anybody got any response about that first rule?
Um. What if a person is unable to purchase the ID card for fifteen dollars here, see?
That was only because it got brought up of what if somebody doesn't have a driver's license? And we said if they don't have a driver's license or a utility bill or anything like that, they could get an ID here, like they don't have to purchase an ID here, that was just an option.
Well, I'm just saying, if they wanted to get one here and they could not pay fifteen dollars, I'm just saying, yeah. And they didn't have an ID. To please that they are a resident of Randolph County.
As far as I know, everybody has had a driver's license or some other form of ID. I don't know of anybody that's come up here to get one just for that purpose.
But they are giving that third option, like the photo ID in conjunction with a household utility bill in your name. So there's a... What other photo IDs are out there? I know military has one.
Well, the state has like a non-driver ID.
We've had a lot of Southern Union students with college IDs with a photo on.
Okay.
Jerry, have you had any problems with no IDs or people not? Have you?
Not, really, no. We've had a handful maybe that have had to use the third option with the utility bill and a photo ID. But they don't have a problem. Had them now. Usually even if I ever seen a car has your name, address on it. So as long as you've got a photo ID, you have that in your dash.
So is that included in one, under eighteen too, or just? For eighteen, that whole rule?
It's anybody that comes in, but most of those are, uh, school kids. And they, we use their dragonfly, we use their power school, we've used... We encourage them to have a parent come in because you want them to have permission from their parents for them to be there because of liability. So we encourage them to have their parent come in and we have their parents' driver's license on file with the children in the household listed with their ages and an emergency contact number.
Okay, then that's cool, he is like seventeen and brought out of school, whatever.
We haven't had any.
From my knowledge, we haven't had any that didn't have an ID that was driving age. That, that would be true, so.
Usually there's homeschool kids, but their parents will come in and provide the information.
Jerry, to your knowledge, or AJ, either one, do you know of anybody that has stopped coming to the rec center over their ID? They used to come? Anybody got any more questions about the first rule over here? Alright, we're gonna move on to the second one. Anyone who is not a resident of Randolph County, Alabama, or is unable to provide proof of residency must purchase a guest pass for five dollars per day. Any senior citizen, non-resident over the age of sixty may purchase a monthly pass for a reduced rate of twenty dollars. Y'all wanna discuss that?
I know, um, we discussed about last week about the twenty dollars, but two ladies who were coming from wherever, I'm not sure when we said that.
I think it was five.
Yeah, one's high points, one's hurting out in Georgia. About the twenty dollars. And we only had those two people and we said, um, we didn't see any reason why they should be paying.
Well, I, I, as y'all know, I brought it up last council meeting and I stand by it. I have a problem with that. I, I do. I have a problem with us charging whether it be twenty dollars or five dollars. I, I made that clear, you know, last time, that's just my feelings on that. You know, uh...
That was just based on, we got the rules from all the surrounding areas and their memberships and fees were much higher than five dollars. But it's just not our tax base, that's not who's paying to keep the lights on out there, that's not who's paying water bill. They're not from Roanoke or Randolph County. So if you split up into what those ladies, the two ladies, which is if they spoke of, they pay less than two dollars a visit. And they, they about an hour and a half, three times a week.
You said that's not our tax base, but I bet they come along and be spending money. And I bet when they leave, the rent, they're about to spend money. I'm just saying.
Let me ask you this.
I'm sorry. No, no, you go ahead.
Um. This was put in place because was there an issue of non-Randolph County residents coming? Had we had an influx of those and that's why this rule was put in place?
Some, what, yeah.
The other portion of it was just them not being in our tax base. And I mean, I know it seems like a small amount, but I mean, we have limited revenue in our town and, you know, is that amount gonna make or break us? No, but does it help with the maintenance of the machines that they use and the, you know, it costs us over a half million dollars a year to run our rent department? So I just feel like we shouldn't turn away, um, a revenue option.
They're not gonna go anywhere if that cheap in Hur County or Chambers County.
Have they ever complained about paying?
They did at the beginning, but obviously they complained lately, but not today.
Well, first of all, it's cancer, so, uh, first of all, plus seniors, I mean, they don't fix income here. I mean, what is twenty dollars, ten dollars a month? That, that could be a lot for a senior. And it ain't benefiting us enough, it's benefiting us really much enough, so I don't see the purpose of it. I'm still.
Jerry or AJ, do either one of you feel like we have had anybody that came in the past that no longer comes because of the job?
There, there was a couple adults that would come sparingly, maybe once or twice a month, that we haven't seen in a while. But that whole group's also not coming, that even the ones from Roanoke anymore, for whatever reason, so.
We talked to one of the ones that spearheaded all that and he said that they just don't have time to come anymore. He said it has nothing to do with any of their own changes, that they just don't have time. I know one of them moved away. One of them that was spearheading a lot of it, that sent all the messages and organized all of it for them.
I'm frank, we don't, this is my personal, we don't have something of this nature intact. My feelings are we may have people coming from more so, you know, from Chambers County to do more harm than good. Does that make sense? I mean, they're not here, they're just here to, they're not here for the principal purpose of exercise. They're here to either cause trouble or, you know, um, break the equipment or whatever. So I feel like that is a nominal fee and, um, you know, any respectable person to me would not mind paying it because they understand it helps maintain the equipment, keep the lights on and that type of thing, you know, keep utilities going. Which I know it's not much, but there needs to be something in place to target anybody that was coming or any will.
Now, I will tell you that I discussed with the rec center staff, you know, anybody that's there that's causing a disruption or destroying any kind of equipment from the city, they're called the police. The police do a report, because with no report, nothing happens. Even, you know, I mean, that's just the way it is. They've gotta have a report, um, to document that there's a problem at rec center with individual people. If it's not important enough to file a police report and is really not important enough, you know, it's not an issue. And we discussed that and I think, I think we got that cleared up real well. Because we don't want anybody out there tearing up our equipment, whether they pay or not, you know.
Was there any issues before and start charging them?
Yes.
People coming?
Well, they didn't wanna follow, we had some out of towners come in that wanted to follow our rules.
How much did you qualify it, you know?
Sometimes we turn off the lights and everybody would have to go, it just depends on how far it went, how many warnings you'd already given. Like, we don't ever just stop everything. There's lots of warnings given, there's lots of reminders given, there's lots of... We, we try really hard because we never, they, they haven't always been out there, the rules haven't always been out there. We do, we bend over backwards trying to make sure everybody understands.
You turn off the lights?
We have in the past, not.
You didn't call the police?
No.
Why didn't you call the police?
We usually only call the police when there's an altercation.
But it was a problem with you turning the lights off when everybody had to leave. Don't you think you should've called the police and made some kind of I know report?
We have an incident report that we have, that we write on individuals when we have, when they rule to put in place.
And that's a good sign.
Right.
You know, if you're not, not having to, you know, take any kind of action, that's good.
The worst thing that we talked about with the police report was the threat to the two employees that we had from student. So I think that would suit us well with that police report for that.
You know, from, from a, and I'm, I'm talking about, you know, from a police perspective and, you know, from when I was there. If you've got a person who's violent, you don't need to be confronted, you need to let them do it. And everybody's got cell phones, I, I know everyone out there that's got one or some way to notify, you know, and, and the police will respond. But, um, yes, if, if you need the police out there, you need to call them and let them take that, that action. Truthfully, anybody that comes out there to cause a problem and the police show up, either they'll stop or they'll remove them from there, all you gotta do is just tell them. Anybody else got any discussion on rule two that we need to? Don't be further in. Alright, rule number three, groups of ten or more must reserve the gym in advance and pay an angle, uh, any necessary rental fees associated with large group use. Any renters must adhere to the same policies outlined herein. This excludes civic, nonprofit groups and reserved in advance. Any, anybody got any issue with that that we know of or have heard any complaints about?
I know, um, we used to have, uh, adult city league basketball. So do they still do that out there?
We've offered it every year. Last year it did not make because they had a league in, with the weather and... They had a league and they were getting to play on Sunday.
Saying it all the week.
And they wanted us to change our schedule. With baseball and softball at all is at the same time and we're working day and night and it's hard to throw weekends in there too. So I, you know, we met with all the employees and we tried to work it out and they said they'd just rather play in the league than the other season. So it didn't make last year, we had one, I think that paid the bill. One team paid the bill last year.
They used to play on different nights, right?
Yes, we.
Then they were playing saves.
No, not while I've been.
So do you know of anything we could do to get them to come back?
Um, they mentioned several things, like the money for the ref and like Joe Brown was working there at the time and he was our go-between because he's friends with all those and he brought everything to the table and we all worked on it and he agreed that it was, it was just better just to let him go play somewhere else.
But is that y'all's call? I mean, I'm just asking, is that your call?
I thought it was.
That it's better for them to go play somewhere else?
We still offered it. We didn't take the option away for that year. We just didn't make the changes to the weekend. We didn't take the option away.
So, but what happened with the weekdays, though?
They, they didn't wanna play on the weekdays. The, so they...
All of them?
We had one team sign up. And you can't play a league with just one team.
I remember that.
The rest of them decided.
And we had to come date weekends, is that not possible? Us to do something like that?
Are you asking me?
The end of that.
We, we discussed it as a group, all the employees there and we didn't see it as options.
Didn't let?
See it as an option.
Do you remember baseball?
It was baseball, softball season, we had to work all day and all night. So that was just throwing weekends in there too. So there was, there was actually no work.
You can leave a lot of closely.
That's something that the league has, that y'all wanna open up the weekend option. But it takes two employees at a time to open up with everything.
And the hours of that all day would be quite a lot.
So what they have been in the past for adult basketball would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and they play three games a night, so six, seven, eight.
What about on the weekends, what are, what would be those hours?
You're looking at replacing nine games all on the weekend, so you're, you're talking twelve hour day or so.
Would you have to replace the whole of those games on the weekend? I mean, because it'd be like so many teams just repeating, so many weeks. Something like that.
If you don't play it all nine, then you're looking at just making the season that much longer. You like to play it all day. You, you, you relieve the last three or four months instead of two months.
So that's just what you know, save it, not save it, send it.
I was looking in your last workshop in the last year and saw some comments on hiring part-time to cover those. Whatever happened with that opportunity?
I'm just like, it was something that was mentioned, but it never went any further than just being mentioned.
Is that, would that be an option, Jerry? Could it be an option?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine with me, but we had a terribly hard time finding a full-time. That's our long time, so.
Then it would be hard if it's like just strictly Saturdays. Unless you had somebody out there trying to, you know, bring a little extra income for that.
And you're dealing with money, so you have to, you're in a parent's trust where there's no worries now.
Would you have to have two people?
We have to have two people, like somebody has to be at the door to, you know, stamp hands with people that bring in shoes for the court and, um, watch the bags and, I mean, somebody has to stay right there pretty much the whole time. And the other person is what we call a floater and they walk around and just make sure there's no problems, get the spills up if something happens, addresses, anything.
And I'm assuming those two people, it'd be really more than five hours because they gotta make sure it's fans clean and everything, so, you know, what it's like.
Depending on what, what's on the schedule and if it has to be done that night or if it can wait for the next morning, for the next time the employees are there.
And also, back to the adult, I know when Eric was over there, they used to open up and he would go play on Sunday for two or three hours.
What happened to that?
A lot of that he was actually doing on his own time and wasn't paid originally. And they opened it, so, or they made it where he could be paid for it and then he decided he didn't wanna do it anymore. And nobody else wanted to be there on Sunday. Personally, I can't be there on Sundays, I'm really involved in my church, so I can't. I can't be there on Sundays and then nobody else's gonna take it, so.
AAU basketball, we use Sunday a lot. And then sometimes we'll throw extra basketball practices on Sunday afternoon if somebody's available to work and coaches are asking for more practices. Because right now they're on Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays and Saturday mornings. And if they ever actually ask for extra, we do Sunday afternoons. And who works there? Depends on who's available.
The same Saturday too.
Like, right now we have our basketball practice schedule posted on the board. And whoever wants to work those nights or those Saturdays, they write their name beside it.
So they do work?
Yeah.
If, if we hired two additional full-time people, if, what would be the hours for those weekend days that you would need in there?
I mean, this is all hypothetical, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, hypothetical.
I would, what I would do is I would contact, I'd take my contact sheet from the last season and call those captains and say, hey, if we do a weekend, what are y'all looking for specific hour-wise? And then go from there.
So basically.
I would think you would have to start early because you're gonna have to try to put a lot into one day unless you do two days. And I would start that morning, but maybe they're looking for some nighttime, I don't know.
So where, you're thinking on Saturdays roughly twelve hours, right? Is that?
You could play all nine games from that week, it'd be roughly twelve hours.
And then on Sunday, you wouldn't do twelve on Sunday, would you?
If, if we're gonna do both, you could do like six Saturday, three Sunday and then that would have your week covered. Something like that.
Six Saturday.
Six games.
Of six games.
And then three games on Sunday.
Oh, okay, okay. So that six hours would equal about, I mean, that of six games would equal about twelve on Saturday and that three would equal six hours roughly on Sunday?
But it'd be, it'd be more like, for the six games, it'd be probably seven to seven and a half hours and then for your three, uh, four, four and a half, or, or three and a half to four, I mean.
So we're talking about twelve hours.
Twelve, yeah.
For all nine games, so.
Okay, I got you, got you. Alright.
Is it possible that if they was to start that, that some of them, some of them would be willing to make a play a game during the week?
Some of the teams might be willing to, you just have to ask them.
Jerry, what about referees? Would that be a problem, you think, or?
Referees are a problem, yeah, we seem to have them right now, so.
Y'all use a league, is that like a league, y'all get them from, or they?
We try really hard just to use home people that are certified because when you get into those, um, what's the word, that word? They're, those groups, they cost associations, they charge way more than, um, so it just depends. Like right now I've got somebody working on getting certified for basketball. Um, I had some seniors in high school get certified for baseball and softball. It just depends on what we're, what we end up with. I mean, we've had to step on the field and call bases for games ourselves, so.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, that, that's been hard for a while now and there, it's a lot of sense.
Anybody got any more questions on that one? Alright, uh, all individuals must sign in upon arrival and sign out on departure. And minors under the age of twelve must have adult supervision. Minors aged twelve to eighteen must list an emergency contact. Minors aged ten to twelve must be accompanied by a sibling fourteen years of age or older. Any discussion on that? I think, me personally, I think that's a great idea. I would hate to not be able to account for who was there. Um, especially, you know, when you've got young kids that you're, um, that you're responsible for. Anybody got any concerns about that? Alright, we'll move on to the next one. Alright, no guns, knives, or weapons of any kind shall be allowed on the premises. Anyone who violates this policy shall be barred from the facility and all other city-owned or rented recreational facilities. Anybody got an issue with that? The next one, the city has a strict no drug, no alcohol policy. If offenders are subject to reporting to law enforcement, excuse me, to reporting to law enforcement and a permanent ban from all city-owned or owned property. The next, no smoking or tobacco products of any kind are allowed on the premises. And it may have been in, when y'all had the workshop last time, I saw something somewhere that may be in this, but I think it was in that about thirty feet. Is that, is that kind of what y'all enforce?
At the fields, we had a sign posted so many feet away from the buildings in the field for smoking areas for outside.
We just need, need to make that, um, clear right here where it says on the premises, um, to say thirty feet from the window or something like that from the doorway?
I thought that, I may be wrong, but I thought that the city's policy on tobacco use would have a designated area at each big city building. I could've been wrong, I'm just, for some reason that's what I thought it said.
That's why we had to put up signs of fields. We're gonna figure out what, so you have to have a designated.
Right, you gotta have a designated area.
We put the sign up.
Each one of our fields had a designated area.
What about the rec center? You got a designated?
We have one actually in the, at the rec center.
I guess if you had a, a sign that says thirty feet at the rec center, I guess anything beyond that would be designated. I, I, that's how I would.
You have to look there on the sidewalk, I guess.
That means you're, if you're a person that's walking to the, uh, rec center, you gotta walk through a bunch of people smoking on the sidewalk because they can just get thirty feet from the door and stand on the sidewalk. There really should be a designated.
I wouldn't suggest the sidewalk at all. I wouldn't suggest.
You're saying thirty feet away from the doorway, you're, they can just stand by their cars, they can stand on the sidewalk. It probably should be more like there's a designated space at some point out there where they go smoke, just.
Where would that space be?
If you're following the thirty foot rule, if you got a tennis court on one side, you got a field behind it and then you got the road in front of it, it's gonna be real hard at rec center, you know?
Opposite side of the gym?
Maybe back behind the building, like where that gate is that comes off, what's that huge street?
You can go thirty feet that way.
Close, close one. It ain't worth a sign here, so the other field, that, on the field, where they're behind you.
It's over there where they put the, they down, put the car on.
Have you had a problem with it?
At the ballgames, you'll have somebody, you know, love to start smoking, somebody will complain, we just ask them to go to the designated area. But, I mean, I've not had anybody like getting mad or anything, really. I haven't personally, but.
More hate than it is smoke, huh?
I mean, most days now, people do understand that, which can't smoke in restaurants and other buildings and things like that.
They think if you're outside, it's, it's free.
Right, and that was the last, when I was at, the last, one of playoff games, um, I smelled cigarette smoke. I'm like, where's that coming from? I never could see it. I smelled them, so. But, um, I'd say just, if there's a possibility of making a designated area back there, do so, so that it's, if you have trouble, so we have designated.
Put the sign, but. Anything else on the tobacco rules? Alright, the next one, I think we're on rule seven. Um, all individuals shall show good sportsmanship at all times. Anyone who threatens physical violence is subject to a percent ban from the facility and all city property. I agree with that totally. And I also think there should be something added to there and subject to criminal prosecution. There's no, nobody needs to put their hands on you or anybody that works out there. That's, that's my opinion on that.
That's also alluding to like them playing basketball with each other, but they're not just us.
Yeah. Would it be up to the individuals about the prosecution? It would, it would. I mean, unless they hold a knife or something like that, you know, they may get into a felony, you know, type thing. Alright, the next one, no full-court play is allowed, is hanging on basketball rims is not permitted. Any discussion on, on that one? The next one, no audible music of any kind is allowed on the premises. Headphones are allowed.
I, I think if you have your music at a reasonable level even in your car, because I don't think anybody's gonna sit in a car with headphones on listening to music. You just can't come through that glass thing.
Is, is that, is, is that talking about the entire complex out there?
In the gym.
I'm sorry.
Inside the gym.
Inside. Let's, we need to put something to probably clarify that a little bit. You know, if you, if you get into the thing, you know, like up at the baseball fields and things like that, that's where the city's noise ordinance would, you know, take effect there.
And these, like, all of these rules were just for the gym?
Just for the gym.
Yes, this didn't encompass like all rec facilities.
There's an inside and an outside set.
This is for the inside, the public play.
Okay. I'd like to see the outside set as well, to see how, I, I mean, you can.
They're very similar, I mean, the ones that apply.
The next one, no one, no one under the age of eighteen shall be allowed in the exercise room without adult supervision. I'm assuming that's for s- safety.
They're, it's behind closed doors and there's no camera in there, so.
Okay, okay. Do you have a lot of people that, that go to the exercise room?
I'd say you do.
You do?
It's mostly older elderly people, but we have quite a few that, I mean.
Is all the equipment still good in there?
We try to update it every year. I put it in my budget every year, so we rotate out, but there, I mean, there is some more. We have some of the fitness fund, I think we have that up there, and the cylinders on those you can't get anymore, so the resistance has worn down some, you know what I mean? But they love those machines and if I mention taking them out of there, they're like, "Don't take them." So, but we do try to put something new in there every year.
That's good, that's real. And, and you do have certain times for women only or men only or just?
No, and they all, I would have them.
For some reason I thought they had that. But everything's fine, nobody has a problem.
Nobody has complained to us.
I got you.
Because normally they, they'll come to me and tell me, you know, something needs batteries or something, the track on the treadmill is squeaking or off and we'll get maintenance, "Come check stuff." So they're pretty good or they'll come tell me, "Hey, it's cold in here, can you turn the air off?" You know, so they're pretty good about coming and talking to us.
Now, this is just a question that I want to ask, okay, if, if a person comes out there to use the exercise room, do they sign in the same as people going to the court? Okay, so everybody that comes signs in.
And I also have a sheet inside the exercise room specifically, so that if we ever apply for anything, we know how many people have been in there. I ask their age, they'll all put it on there, so we know what age group we're, that we have in there the most and that's that thing.
Um, the next one, only clear small gym bags are permitted. No oversized or opaque bags will be permitted. Any discussion on that? I've got a question about that. Alright, when the kids get out of school, alright, any kids that come over from the out of school? What do we do about that?
We have a set of loggers in the lobby for babies.
Okay, alright, so they put their, um, school bags in there and do they bring an extra pair of shoes? I don't even know if we got that far yet, but they, they have an extra pair of shoes. Have you run into any issue with that?
The bags were issued at the beginning, yes. Um, we discussed it and we would all like, um, some flyers made. Like, have you ever gone to a football game where clear bags are required?
Oh, yeah.
They have all these requirements, it tells you how big they can be. We need something like that, we need it more defined. Because, you know, the wa, the hand-sized wallets and diaper bags and, um, medical equipment. I just think it needs to be better defined, but yes, it's, the worst group of people is the elderly people. They don't seem to understand why they can't bring their purses in, but, um, we've had, do you have any here for?
You know, one thing about it regardless, whatever the rule is, it's gotta be the same. I do understand their beef about their purses and the diaper bags, I understand that, but somewhere we gotta have a rule in place that everybody can, you know, follow, not just, you know, some people. Any discussion on that that we need to talk about?
I'm still saying that with the diaper bags, because I heard some mother said they came one time and they baby, had a baby with a diaper bag and they weren't allowed to bring that diaper bag in there and I was like, what?
We've used the same process. We let them put the diaper bags in their lockers in the lobby so that they're accessible. Because they're gonna have to go to the bathroom to change their diaper, anyway you would assume. But, um, I have searched diaper bags and they've taken them in because they insisted that they had to have it. Um, we've had these coolers with ba, baby bottles in them that keeps their milk cold or whatever and we've looked at those and we've allowed them to go in because we checked them. I mean, we, we try to do everything to appease everyone, yes.
You, you brought it up, and this is not a rule, but this is a question I got, talking about changing the baby's diaper. Y'all have a, you don't have.
The last diaper that was changed out there was changed in my office on my couch, because I live in the office.
Wouldn't it be possible for us to look at what an expense of putting a changing station in? I mean, I don't think that would be a real, is the bathroom, I mean, you've got room in there, don't you?
Hey, you get more than four, especially room in there, yeah?
I know we've got one at the library, I.
I mean, they just walk down off the wall and it's a.
I, I tell you what, um, and we'll, I, I, let's find out what one of those would, would cost, but that, if, if, if we're gonna have a facility out there for the public to use and come to, and that's what we want. They need somewhere to change the baby's diaper. I don't, I don't see that.
You'd have to have two.
Well, you would, you'd have to have one in the men's room as well.
Ours was a hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
A hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
It's probably about thirty if you had a looking question.
Thank you. I, I just think, that's my opinion, I think you'd need that. Alright, I lost my place, y'all. Alright, here we go. Um, any individual who physically touches a staff member or other players, managers, coaches, or spectators, or spits on, or threatens to do him or her bodily harm or otherwise uses profanity towards any staff member shall be barred from the facility. And here again, that needs to say and criminally prosecuted.
But if that could be generated, I'd love a court.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the police has to be called. You're not gonna, you, I shouldn't speak to the magistrate, but you probably ain't gonna get no warrant without a police report. And you need it, you need the police report. You know, don't, don't be afraid to call the police and if, you need them, that's what they're there for.
And I don't think the police center ever has a problem going at that to the red whenever y'all need it, because I know which one of two times when I worked at police station and we had to be called, I mean, they were right there holding, you know, problems, so. I don't think that would be an issue, you know?
No, I don't either. If, if, if it got to be an issue, I wish you'd let us know or we can let the chief know. I mean, we, we need to know that. Um, the next one, no profanity is allowed by anyone on or off the court. Offenders are subject to disciplinary action as listed in the disciplinary action violation section. Anybody got an issue with that? Um, no public display of affection shall be allowed to include kissing or touching of any private parts or another individual on premises. Engaging in sexual, excuse me, contact or sexual touching of any kind on premises is subject to disciplinary action. Engaging in unwarranted sexual advances, advances or touching is subject to reporting to law. Um, the next one, all trash must be placed in the proper receptacles. Offenders are subject to disciplinary action. Y'all have a problem with that? People pulling the trash down and they, they do?
Yeah. They know that's where they're trashin' up and they're trashin' everywhere.
Players must immediately report any spills or damage to the facility, to a staff member. Any purposeful damage to the facility is subject to legal action for such damage. Any issues with that?
It's good about funness for students and.
Alright, under the food and drink section, only water shall be permitted in the gym area in clear bottles. Food or drink shall be permitted at any time in the front lobby and outside only. No food, gum, or candy is permitted inside the gym.
We have that lunchroom table in the lobby. One of the suggestions by staff was to mount a TV in the lobby that shows the court so they're not missing. that shows the court, so they're not missing whatever game is going on that they're there for. I thought that was a good idea. Um, because that's really the only lesson you get about it really, is that they're missing what's going on in there, and they just bought some nachos and they gotta sit down and eat it. Um, most of them wait till after the game and get it on their way out or something like that, but, um... It has broken the agreement for the gym, the cleanup in the gym.
I don't think that's asking for too much, but the, I don't know what you need, a TV, and I guess a camera, I would think, so.
Yeah, I'd get a TV and a camera, and you run this directly straight to that TV.
Think that would take, take too long. Anybody else got anything to add to the food and drink?
There was a suggestion last time that we only sell water, since that's all we allow, so I just wanna make sure that's, that's not y'all's feeling, if that's what... Because we just purchase concessions for basketball, because it starts up soon, so.
Once they're freaking it in the designated area.
What, what, what do you, I mean, I, I'm, I'm missing, I, I guess you, I know you're so gatorade, right?
Because a lot of kids get it when they're done, or they'll leave it in the lobby and get it at halftime. We've, we've carved out lots of little places for them to set them and hide them to know that it's theirs, or we'll get a marker and we'll put their initials on top of it. We do different things, but...
Is that like, I mean, you do that at the ballgame, you don't do that during the?
During the day, they'll leave them out and come back, but... And some of them, we even put them in the little one, and just give them what they have and what they ask for.
All right, under the dress code, no individual shall show any gar- undergarments at any time, this is to include underwear, bras. No street shoes, sandals, flip flops, or slides on the court. Basketball shoes, tennis shoes, sneakers must be worn. No other shoes are permitted, as they can damage the court.
Say our basketball league has added that their general rules, that they want all shoes everywhere to tote their shoes in and change once you're inside for basketball games.
So, eh, like, like the school kids that come over, has, has that been an issue at all with the?
Once they adjusted to it, no, they just put their shoes in their bag, like... And most of your basketball players already had shoes in their bags, you can't even... I've had some just put them on top of the locker and leave them at, if they're coming regularly for a while.
Just leaving them.
Right.
All right, shirts must be worn at all times. No jewelry shall be worn, worn during the games. Isn't that some kind of rule, like?
Yeah, sports rule.
You can't wear jewelry, yeah. All right, disciplinary action and violations, the rec center staff shall have the authority to suspend any individual for violating any policy. All right, any unsportsmanlike conduct by a player or a league play shall result in minimum suspension. Anyone involved in an altercation or rejection by an official shall be suspended from playing for thirty days. It must be the rec's director and or staff with suspension time prior to returning to the gym. Anyone in violation of the strict no weapons, no drugs, no alcohol, no physical harm policies shall be banned from the rec center and all other city properties indefinitely. Anyone in violation of any other policy will be restricted from the use of the recreation center as follows. First offense, thirty days, I'm gonna summarize this a little bit. Second offense, six months. Third offense, permanent ban from the rec center and all facilities. Any discussion about any of that? Now, it says on here, when the decision is made by the rec director to permanently ban an individual from the facility, the director shall get notice to the mayor and shall make the final determination of whether a permanent ban is justified. Thereafter, notice shall be made by mail within three business days by the clerk to the individual at the address provided on the proof of residence. Thereafter, the individual who received notice of a permanent ban shall have ten business days to appeal the decision to the city council if they so choose. Y'all, I, I would like to be notified anytime anybody gets suspended, for whether it be thirty days, or six months, or permanent. I wanna know what's going, going on.
That'll be easier with official work.
Yeah. Now, that, that's me, that's me. I, I, I wanna know if we've got somebody that has done that. Just be honest with me, I'm gonna question this about why that happened.
Most of the, there's not been, yeah, then most of those were fights between kids on the court that are, that were on the camera, and that's the majority of them. There's only been one that was even talked of permanent ban, and he threatened two employees, and he's been back since, so all the, all the steps were not followed, there was an incident report, so he served his thirty days, and he's been back in since.
Has there been any additional problems out of him since he's been back?
He's only, he's only been in the hospital, he's on hospital beam. He's only been able to let him in practice, I haven't seen him in on his own.
That was a young man, y'all were telling, wasn't someone, y'all were telling me about, where he was on the basketball team, that one of, he's making threats, and they didn't, they didn't want to, to work. All right, the other issue that I wanna bring up real quick is the rec centers.
I, I got one, just one page, please, okay?
Yes, ma'am, I'm back.
Where it says the city has a strict no drug, no alcohol policy. Offenders are subject to reporting to law enforcement, and a permanent ban from all city-owned property. Let's change that permanent to indefinitely, because people change.
They do. You know, that, that's the other reason I would like to know. You know, it's, uh, well, of course, I would be notified on a permanent ban, but, um, I, I wanna know what's going on. I, I did, uh, no matter how minor or how major.
Right.
Do y'all see anything else on that? All right, the, the other thing that I wanna bring up, rec center hours. Tell us what your hours are.
Monday through Friday, seven to four. Normally, four or five is our supper break for whoever is having to come in or whatever sport is going on at that time. Soccer just finished Thursday, basketball practice started last week. There's always somebody working in the evening or on the weekend, um, because we have something going on at all times. Football, cheerleading, basketball, um, softball, baseball, so...
So, wha- what do you, what, eh, eh, you know, what goes on from seven to eight in the mornings?
We have our meeting first in the morning, everybody gets there to line up the day to talk about what we're doing, and then they go outside and do their stuff, and it depends on what that day is.
Just asking a question, how bad would it damage the routine to change from coming in at seven in the morning to coming in at eight and working till five?
In the wear time, it probably wouldn't matter, but in the summer time, when it's hot, they're, they're doing their weeding early.
I can see that. How would y'all feel about shifting that during? And, and, and you know, if, 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 we, we talked about adding additional employee, you know, my thing is, school gets out at little, I might as well say three o'clock, and, you know, they're there for the ones that come, or would come, are only there for a short period of time, and the rec center's closing. How could we accommodate that?
Change the hours.
If you add the part-time person, you could have them work from five to eight, or change from four to eight, depending on what you do. And you could have it open in, as well as having them work in the weekends. Part-time's what, thirty, thirty-nine hours, or whatever, if you want them to get forty? So, I mean, that's just, you know, that's whatever, if not, you, you have to shift hours to accommodate.
Anybody that, Jerry, that works in the evenings, they are paying for that, are they not? All right, so, are they paid at overtime rate, which is?
It depends on how many hours they have in.
They have to physically work, if they haven't taken any sick time, if they're on holiday, if they're on vacation time. They have to physically be present forty hours to get the overtime.
So, then, I'm just saying, if they've gotten their forty hours in that week, and here they're pulling ten? Did it make ten? Twelve hours?
If you work all three nights, it's usually twelve to fifteen, if you work, you know?
Would that been, if, if that person, initially, most places, overtime is time and a half. So, could we save ourselves a little bit of money? Just asking, if we have a part-time person, and then you're just paying them, not time and a half, but you're just paying them, you know, regular, straight out, would that be a savings?
It depends on what you define their job to be. If you want them to have the gym open, then no, because they won't be able to be at the ball field, you know what I'm saying, because they'll have to be, they'll have to be in the gym the whole time.
And you're not paying somebody to be at the ball field.
All right, we are out of time. Um, I'm going to, um, I guess this is how you do it, is close the, the workshop, is that how we do it? We gotta have a motion to do that? Okay, I gotta go get some. Y'all, I have shoved everything that I had, and I had some, that's what I was doing, maybe, I put a song on. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
For the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Good Father, we would like to thank you once again for allowing us to meet here and handle the city's business. We ask that you bless the mayor and each council member present here, and the apps on to, and we ask that you bless each and every one of the people who have come out to be a part of what's going on in the city going on. We ask that you forgive us for our sins, and lead us and guide us in the direction that we should go in moving the city forward, in Jesus' name we pray. Start praying, amen.
Amen.
Uh, I will tell you, Ms. Barbara is on her way. Uh, she was, uh, just running behind, so she will probably come in just a few minutes. Uh, the next thing is, uh, the minutes from our, um, meeting on November the seventeenth. Everybody got a chance to look over the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as they are?
Motion to approve the minutes as they are from the seventeenth, November twenty-five.
I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, uh, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dutton?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next thing on our agenda is old business. Does anybody have any old business to bring up for the council? None of that, we'll move on to new business. You know, normally, when we talk about the police, it's usually complaints about something they did wrong. Tonight, we've got some police officers that did everything right. Uh, and with that being said, I wanna recognize three officers. Officer Ethan Reeves, you'll step up here. Officer Reeves, um, this is a proclamation by the mayor honoring, uh, Ethan Reeves. Whereas the city of Roanoke is committed to recognizing the outstanding service and exceptional actions of those who protect, protect and serve the community, and whereas on November the twenty-eighth, not, uh, twenty twenty-five, Officer Ethan Reeves of the Roanoke Police Department responded to a critical medical emergency, and whereas Officer Reeves immediately provided life-saving measures, stabilizing the patient and maintaining vital care until emergency medical services arrived. And whereas Officer Reeves' quick response, professionalism, and dedication to the, to duty exemplified the highest standard of law enforcement and reflect great credit upon the city of Roanoke, and whereas his heroic response not only saved a life, but also broke honor and admiration to the Roanoke Police Department and strengthened the community's trust in his public service. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Roanoke recognizes that such acts, excuse me, of valor and humanit- hu- humanity deserves the highest commendation and serve as an inspiring example for others. Now, therefore, I, Adam Melton, mayor of the city of Roanoke, do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Officer Ethan Reeves for his extraordinary courage, swift action, and heroic dedication to protecting and saving lives. Officer Jason Watson, please take a step forward. This is a proclamation by the mayor offer, uh, honoring Officer Jason Watson. Whereas the city of Roanoke takes great pride in recognizing those who extraordinary actions exemplify courage, compassion, and unwavering dedication to the protection of human life, and whereas Officer J- And whereas Officer Jason Watson of the Roanoke Police Department demonstrated exceptional professionalism and presence of mind on the twenty-fifth day of November twenty twenty-five, when he responded to a critical emergency situation. And whereas Officer Watson quickly assessed the severity of the situation and acted with decisive bravery, skill, and compassion, providing life-saving assistance that resulted in the preservation of human life. And whereas Officer Watson's actions reflected the highest standard of law enforcement, showing extraordinary courage and dedication in service to the residents of Roanoke. And whereas his heroic response not only saved a life, but also brought honor and admiration to the Roanoke Police Department and strengthened the community's trust in its public service. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Roanoke recognized that such acts of valor and humanity deserved the highest commendation and served as an inspiring example of others. Now therefore, I, Adam Melton, mayor of the city of Roanoke, do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Officer Jason Watson for his extraordin- extraordinary courage, swift action, and heroic dedication to protecting and saving lives. Congratulations. And now, uh, Officer Ricky Shaddis, please. Gotta take a deep breath, that's a lot breathing. Alright, proclamation by the mayor honoring Officer Ricky Shaddis. Alright, whereas the city of Roanoke honored and celebrated those who exemplify courage and integrity and unwavering dedication to the safety of our community. And whereas Officer Ricky Shaddis of the Roanoke Police Department displayed remarkable vigilance and professionalism on the twenty-fifth day of November twenty twenty-five, when he observed some suspicious activity that took swift, decisive, excuse me, the, the decisive action to investigate. And whereas Officer Shaddis courageously intervened and successfully stopped an active burglary in progress, preventing the loss of property, protecting the safety of the business and the residents, and assisted in the apprehension of the suspects. And whereas Officer Shaddis demonstrated exemplary judgment, bravery, and commitment to public safety, going above and beyond the call of duty in the performance of his responsibilities. And whereas his actions reflect the highest standards of law enforcement and serve as an outstanding example, dedication and service bringing honor to the Roanoke Police Department and the city of Roanoke. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Roanoke recognized that such acts of heroism support the foundation of safety and trust within our community. Now therefore, I, Adam Melton, mayor of the city of Roanoke, do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Officer Ricky Shaddis for his extraordinary service, exemplary courage, and exceptional commitment to the protection of our community. Thank you, Officer Shaddis. You know, what these officers did, and these were three separate incidences, it wasn't one. He caught someone that was attempting to break into the bank. He performed life-saving CPR on a person that actually the city had warrants on. Um, bringing him back, using CPR. And he did the same thing with a prisoner in the backseat of the patrol vehicle. That's what law enforcement is about, it's about doing for others. And these guys, I am so proud of what they did. And, uh, I just, I just want to say thank you, thank you very much. Alright, moving on, and that'll give me a second to catch my breath. Um, we have an update from Harmon Engineering.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Austin Harmon. Um, I'm one of the project engineers working up here for the city of Roanoke right now. We currently have four active projects with you. The first is the street paving improvements. Um, all those roadways have been paved. We're working with Ingram to work on a timeline for the final striping, and we're doing punch list stuff this week. So if anybody has anything they see with the new roadways, please let us know. We'd love to look at it with Ingram and make sure we get everything to y'all's, y'all's standards. Second project we're working on right now is the Aldott Sidewalk Improvement Project. We're, we're actively in the design process for this right now. Aldott's got, they've reviewed some of the stuff we've done, and we're still working through that. So it's, it's headlong in design right now. Other projects we have is the CBDG Storm Grain Project on Cannon Street and Mulberry Street. They are both active right now. It's a terrible time to put in storm grain. It's extremely wet, but they're working through it, and we're trying to keep the roads as clean as possible. They're removing material today to sweep the roads down. Um, Mulberry Street is active as well. They're laying storm grain up between some of the older houses through there to try to get to the edge of the pavement. If y'all can just bear with us, we're trying to, trying to keep as much out of the street as possible. Uh, the last active project we have right now is the city's C and D landfill. We're finally through the permitting phase with A.D.M. It has been submitted for final signatures to one of A.D.M.'s boards. We expect to have something back on it in the next two weeks, I'm hopeful. To move forward on opening the next, the next section of that landfill and then the next set. Any questions for me? That's all the active projects we have right now.
Lot going on.
Yes, ma'am.
And you also have in your packet a proposal for two different storm drains on, um, Pageus Street. One, he gave a lump sum amount for a thirteen thousand nine hundred, and the other one is a time and materials project, just because they're really not sure what's up over there.
The time and materials project, the sinkhole has started on the north side of Pageus Street, right, right where it meets Park Avenue above the middle school. And until we dig down and know what it even looks like, it's hard to guess it, what we're gonna have to do to fix it. And then the lump sum project is replacing an old concrete underdrain that crosses under one of those roads, and it's in, it's in terrible disrepair.
Keith, what, what street is that one on, the storm drain that he's talking about?
They're both on Pageus.
Both on Pageus. That one is Mr. X.
Yeah, okay.
On this end, and then the other one's on the other end down there, right above Knight Inn Lot.
Okay, right there at the school.
Right above there, yeah. But they're both on Pageus Street.
And, uh, the sinkhole right at Park Avenue and Pageus, we hope to do over Christmas while none of the students are here. We can dig down and evaluate what's there and try to make a decision on the best way to fix it moving forward.
But it, the second one, the time and equipment and stuff, it'll be basically s- some of the same line items you do. Cut it out, cut the asphalt, demo the pipe.
It's out from under the street, I hope it's out from under the street, and we don't have to demo any of the asphalt. The sinkhole is out, but it's hard to know. I, I estimate the depth seven to eight feet deep before we get to the pipe. I don't know if it tries to go back under the street or what's causing it. We've worked on the other side of the street, uh, probably two years ago. It's an old box culvert laid in block, and the pipe that discharges down the hill is a thirty-six inch black round HDPE. But somewhere they made that transition in there, and if I'm a betting man, it's in that transition. So once we get to it, to know how severe it is, if the pipes are separated, or if we can just brick around it, I really don't know till I get, I hope I don't have to take up any asphalt at all.
The school actually put in that pipe, I guess when they acquired that property. And it goes down to the branch down below. I'm not sure what, who did it or what point in time they did it, but it took quite a while for it to surface at the top.
And it's bad.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get any better.
No, and that's a safety issue.
It is right there at the school too. The same on Pageus. It, uh, I was over there looking at that, and it appeared, I think maybe me and Keith talked about it, that one end of that pipe had been plugged by cement.
There, there was an old house that they actually created off and pushed down in there in front of the pipe.
I mean, it was, it's bad, it's real bad. Amanda, um, Madam clerk, excuse me, to pay for this, do we have sufficient, can we use the gas, some money out of the gas tax fund, the tax funds to do that?
It's, the gas tax is typically for, um, transportation like the roadways and stuff, but, uh, we should have money in the general fund to cover.
Care of that. You need to, I'm sorry.
I was just asking if you need a motion.
I, I do need a motion.
Okay, will I make the motion that, uh, we hire Harmon Engineering to repair these two pipes, sinkholes, and, uh, and those roads fixed?
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, roll call vote. Do we need to do that as a, um, um, suspend the rule?
No, sorry, that's just on the ordinances, because they have to do it twice.
Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Okay, we got that taken here. Alright, the recs and the rules, at, uh, at five o'clock, we had the workshop. Um, do, going back to the recs and the rules. Bear with me just a minute, I have a bit of a shuffle here. Do we need to talk about any of the rule changes that, uh, we might want to do? Do I have some discussion about that? Would like to change any of these rules that we have in, in place now?
I would like to change the, um, word and, or the one that I spoke about earlier on page one.
That was, uh, you know, that was where we changed permanent to indefinite. Alright, do, let's, let's just take it like that, one at a time like that. Alright, on the rule where it says the city has a strict no-drug alcohol policy, offenders are subject to reporting to law enforcement and an indefinite ban from all city of Roanoke property. Do I have a motion to, um, change the wordings from permanent to indefinite? Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
We have a little discussion.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Who would make the determination to allow the person back? Is it gonna be the mayor, or is it gonna be?
Be glad to.
The rec center?
It's, no, it's right on page three at the bottom.
Well, I didn't read all of it, but I was just wondering if this was a different situation than what we were talking about.
Do I have a motion?
We have the motion and the second.
We then, alright, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, does anyone else have anything that they would like to see changed?
I would like to see number two changed, I'd like to see pay a bad, I was a lady with a twin office, any citizens.
Um, discussion. Alright, do I have a motion to change rule two, and I will read it. Anyone who is not a resident of Randolph County, Alabama, or is unable to provide proof of residency must purchase a guest pass for five dollars per day. Any senior citizen, non-resident over the age of sixty, may purchase a monthly pass for a reduced rate of twenty dollars. Um, that's how it reads. Councilmember Henderson has asked for that to be changed. Are you asking for it to be deleted?
To be removed.
To be removed?
Yes.
Alright, any discussion?
Mayor Melton, can I ask a question?
Yes.
We're not checking for residency, is there any need to check ID?
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah, I recognize you.
Alright, the question I have is, why wouldn't we just make this for people over, that are senior citizens? Because it's been u- been used everywhere else, and if you have someone that's coming from somewhere else here, they're avoiding using something that they have free in their area, but they're coming to our facility, and that's where all our problems is coming from. So why wouldn't we just delete it for people who are senior citizens?
Okay, alright, thank you, Gary. Um, Ms. Henderson has asked for that to be removed. Do I have a, um, motion to remove rule number two?
I have a motion. Do that.
Do I have a second?
I guess my question is, I need to, tell us what you, give me a clear understanding during, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, um, number two. Where they're charging five dollars for a guest pass and the twenty dollars for a flat rate for the same. You want no charge for any of it? Right.
Councilmember Delshaw, you have a question?
Well, I did, I just told him I opened the door as well. Um, and I, you know, I just, I have a problem. I definitely have a problem with people coming from our Randolph County to use our facilities. I'm glad they feel comfortable enough, welcome enough to come and use the facility. But if I were to go into their county and they were to ask me for five dollars or twenty dollars a month or whatever, I would think that was fair and very nominal. I mean, it, it's kind of minskul, um, in the price, but it's just the principle, um, acknowledging the fact that you do not live in Randolph County. And I don't like, like Jerry said, so do I, do I not have to verify anybody? Um, if we're gonna take away this, does it delete and do away with verifying anybody? I mean, I'm asking the question.
We're verified, if not, I mean, it's okay to verify the IDs and stuff, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, you're asking for us to delete, delete rule two or?
Yeah, because I don't think it has been a problem in the past of a bunch of out-of-town peoples coming in to use that facility in the past, have it?
I'm sorry, what?
Haven't ever been a problem of outsiders, a bunch of outsiders coming in?
Not recently.
To use that, have it ever in the past, before these rules were made?
Yeah.
We had problems with a bunch of outsiders.
Some, I, I wouldn't say a bunch, there'd be, you know, four or five.
I mean, that's not enough, though. Just four or five.
There's not a ton of people that come from out of Randolph.
I didn't think so, I didn't think so.
I think I asked you this question in a previous meeting, but how many people do you think at this last month or?
In a month, how many people do I think out of Randolph? Those two that come constantly, and we may have two more in a month that pay the five dollars.
So we're not gonna lose any of them, are they?
Like somebody that's visiting a family member here or there's different, you know, over Christmas break or when college is out, different scenarios.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I should have a question.
Yes.
What um, is used as proof of residency? Is that a government ID? Everybody doesn't have that? Is that a? No question.
Um, I've still got the motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Alright, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
No.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Epstein.
Councilmember Delshaw?
No.
That motion does not carry, correct?
It does.
It doesn't, oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay, alright, um, any other rules that we talked about that anybody would like to see amended?
Uh, the smoking room on page one. No smoking or tobacco products of any kind are allowed other than areas designated for tobacco products.
Okay, alright, we need to add about the designated smoking area. Alright, any discussion about that rule? Which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, rule seven. I have no discussion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright. Any other rules that we have? Anybody's got any concerns about that we need to address?
I would like to just um, make a motion, but it's for the, uh, to be, we can look into it uh, in the future, but I would like to make a motion to uh, consider adding two part-time people at the Recreation Center and um, add some other recreation as deemed necessary.
Would you like for us to advertise for two part-time positions?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do it.
Okay, alright.
Don't you think we would need a job description to go along with that?
Jerry, would y'all already have job descriptions for, in place?
The ones that we have include a lot of our daytime work, so we would just have to probably tweak it some.
Mm-hmm. And gotta know that weekends will be?
Weekends and nights.
Mm-hmm, weekends and nights.
Be required. I got a motion to take applications for part-time, two part-time employees for the Recreation Center. Uh, any discussion? Um, do I have a second? Well, do I have a motion? Tammy, did you make that motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Um, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Okay, alright, um, moving on to uh, holiday, the council meeting schedule. Um, I think Ms. Amanda has that in her packet.
Yes, um, I have a list of all the meetings for next year. We have two that would be changed from the first and third Mondays. The first one um, would be a Tuesday, uh, moved for the Martin Luther King Junior holidays. And then the second one would be moved to a Tuesday on September the eighth, moved for the Labor Day holiday.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to accept the uh, city council meeting dates for the twenty twenty-six?
I made the motion that we will adopt the city council meeting dates for twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
The next item is the twenty twenty-six holiday schedule and it's also in your packet.
Um, e- everything is pretty much the same as every other year except for the additional holiday that was approved Friday after New Year's and it's listed on there.
Okay, any discussion? Do I have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-six holiday schedule?
May I make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty-six holiday schedule?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Next item up is the court schedule. It's also in our packet.
The only change on it is in November and instead of the first Tuesday, it's moved to the second Tuesday because of Election Day.
Any discussion about the municipal court dates? Do I have a motion to accept the court dates?
I will make a motion to accept the court dates as often.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, moving on. I think as we discussed in the last council meeting, there was uh, some discrepancies with our, some of our employees that are on-call from time to time. So, we took an on-call policy and wrote it, if everybody's had an opportunity to look at that. I think this should address any questions, well, actually there was no on-call policy. Um, but we have this one and it pretty much answers any questions that an employee should have of what could uh, be the results of uh, if you're on-call or um, just failing to answer your telephone and respond to the on-call and still taking the pay. Has everybody had an opportunity to look over this on-call policy?
I haven't.
Alright, um, is there any discussion about the on-call policy?
I'd like to ask Keith, you know, his department is probably one of the most called in. Are you, does it sound good to you, Keith, as far as the on-call policy?
I'm not saying it.
Oh.
It's, it's pretty much in the way, there, there was just some misunderstanding about when you're on-call and you're getting paid, um, to be on-call, you gotta respond when somebody calls you and not just because you want to be, you know.
Were you signed up for it?
You don't, you know, if you're gonna sign up for what you need to be and you certainly, if you're not going to respond to the call, you don't need to be paid for it.
Right, if you don't show up or you don't get paid.
True. Um, so this is.
So with none of these, they get two hours paid because when it's second, they get the pay, of course. We have a week like that.
Yeah, what that basically says is they're getting two hours paid just to be on-call. And then after, you know, and it gives how long they got to respond, which agrees with fifteen minutes. And then if they're needing to come in, then they have forty-five minutes to respond to, in other words, to get here.
If they don't respond, if they don't contact their supervisor to get a replacement, they're gonna be subject to disciplinary action. They forfeit the call on pay.
That's it.
So you will receive two hours of being available as on-call?
That's, that's correct. Will each department get a copy of that? Oh, all, every, i- i- if it's passed, yeah, we'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that. Anybody else have any questions about the on-call policy? Alright, do I have a motion to accept the on-call policy?
I'm moving that we will accept um, the on-call policy.
Alright, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Okay, um, the next item on the new business um, is accepting bids for the roll-off containers.
We um, opened bids November the twenty-sixth for the roll-offs. Alabama Georgia roll-offs bid four hundred and fifty dollars and then seventy dollars for everything over five tons. NY's bid seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and then thirty-nine dollars per ton once they hauled it off. And then one twenty-one disposal bid four hundred dollars and then thirty-eight dollars a ton for anything over five tons. So one twenty-one was the little bit.
That is less than what we're paying now, correct?
Yes, currently we are paying um, four hundred and fifty dollars and then seventy dollars a ton. Um, Alabama Georgia bid the same thing that we're paying now.
Um, any discussion about this uh, the, the roll-off dumpsters?
I'd make a motion that we hire one-to-one disposal.
Do I have?
For the roll-off business.
Do I have a second?
I'll stick to that motion.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Right, that motion carries. Um, the next thing on the, it'd be the mayor's report. I'm just gonna kinda give y'all the rundown of what I've been doing for the um, last couple of weeks. Um, on this past Monday, I worked at the Nutrition Center uh, helping deliver uh, food to um, people. And it was quite an experience. Um, Reverend Trammell, as you know, drives the van. He rated my work at Dina. Uh, but we did, we carried, I think it was forty-four plates. Um, and it, I, I really learned a lot and I really enjoyed it. If any of you ever get an opportunity to do that, um, I think you'd be well, well pleased. Uh, they do an outstanding job at the Nutrition Center. And if you get a chance, um, I'd like for you to go by out there. I wanna show y'all something that I had no idea this was out there. Can y'all see that?
Train.
The train? I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this that way and I'll pass it down, but uh, Mr. Jackie Tucker. Yeah, that's in the back room. I wanna play with that train so much while I was there. That is really, well, they probably would've, but I was on the clock.
Oh.
But uh, Mr. Jackie Tucker, as my understanding, built that. Um, it is really amazing to see it. Um, so if you're ever out that way, tell them you wanna go in and see that. That is uh, that is really nice, really nice. Now, the photography is not that great because I did it, but um, but it is really something to see. Uh, the next thing I've got is uh, Amanda and I have been meeting with insurance companies uh, all for the last couple of weeks. What it is, our city insurance is up and I guess they send out, I don't know, but somehow they know when our insurance is due, but we have been meeting with several um, insurance companies. Uh, we got a meeting next week with another company. And let's see, that's with Amy, correct, next week?
It's this Wednesday.
It's this Wednesday, okay, this Wednesday. Um, so uh, that's been taking us quite a bit of time and we have learned, I, or I say, I won't say we, I have learned a lot um, just listening to that. Uh, the next thing is, I've worked on, um, the police department has had it for many, many years. But a lot of times citizens will come in and they wanna complain um, about something that has happened to them. Well, what we've done is we have made complaint packets to go at each city building um, where it's got specific instructions of how a person that may have a complaint can file it and instead of it going back to the department where they may have the problem, all the complaints will come to City Hall and we will make sure that they are handled in the, by the appropriate people. So, just so you know that um, we've got them fixed up, ready to go. The police department already has their new complaints and I put the one in City Hall out here. Um, so basically if a person has a complaint on a city employee or a particular thing, they can fill this out, they can mail it or they can bring it up here and we'll address it. That way we know what's going on inside each department. Um, the next thing is, um, we have a, we, we tried to have a full citywide Christmas party at night, but it, it's just not worked out. So what we're gonna do, all the city employees and the city council, we're gonna have a Christmas lunch on December the twenty-third at noon um, at the uh, Armory. Um, what we're asking each department is just bring something to drink. I'm gonna take care of the rest of it. And uh, I hope you like my cooking. But if you can, come out and eat lunch and uh, you know, have a little fellowship with all the city employees. Um, I wanna compliment the Christmas parade, historically did an excellent job. I wanna thank all the citizens that came out and participated in it. We had a nice, even with the SEC championship game and the weather going on, we had a very nice crowd, very nice. And uh, so if anybody that had anything to do with it, I wanna say thank you. Um, we have a new restaurant that opened uh, out in the Plaza Shopping Center, has the doors too. Um, I have ate there and it's very good, very good. Uh, if you get a chance, go by. I don't think you'll be disappointed. Uh, the next thing that I've got on my list here is I had a, uh, went to a meeting with the Rotary Club. And I actually found out something, if any of the councils ever interested about attending the, a Rotary Club meeting, the, we have a standing membership with the Rotary Club. So if anybody one day has got some free time and would like to go, um, let us know and go. You'll enjoy. So just uh, just so you know that. Um, the next thing is the uh, ice break downtown. We uh, we need some volunteers, uh, and I know all of you will be willing to volunteer some time. Um, we have a schedule up here. Um, this Wednesday, the Rock Mills Church of Nazarene, that I, I've been told to be there at six o'clock. Uh, I'm gonna try to handle that. And if any of you wanna come help, please do. But we've got a calendar up here and if any of you can volunteer some time, uh, it sure would be nice. Um, I also talked to Judge Newsom's office today. Um, I also talked to Judge, uh, Newsom's office today and they're going to maybe after this week be able to send us some, um, help to fill in some things there. I would also like for us, and it doesn't have to be the next council meeting because it's next week, but I'd also like to see a schedule, a workshop on our nuisance ordinance, um, some things that I feel like we really, really need to change that would make, um, a difference in town and it would make, um, make our neighborhoods look better. It's just, it's not anything intentional, but it may be some, um, omissions in the nuisance ordinance. Um, what y'all think about that?
I, I, well, I know for a fact that there is something that needs to be amended.
Yeah.
Um, to get the process going, to clean up some areas.
Um, do y'all have any idea of when, uh, looking at, and I don't know where I did with it, but looking at the upcoming city council's schedule, whatever I did with?
We have the fifth and then the, um, twentieth.
The fifth and the twentieth, January. Would any of those dates be good for the council?
January the fifth, that's good for me.
January the fifth, and I'll check with our attorney, um, because we're gonna need him, we're gonna need him in here to help us with that. So January the fifth, is that suitable to everyone? What does that mean? And I can think that concludes everything that I had. Moving on to the council member report, uh, Councilmember Holly, District One.
I have a couple of things, please, thank you. Um, Keith, do we have an update on the overhead bridge on the one here, on CSX?
No ma'am, last time I talked to him, that plant that makes their boards for the runners and stuff, they had a big fire and burned all of them up and he's reordered and waiting to go.
Can you check on that this week, please, to see where they are now? That thing is, that's, it's a mess, all those broken boards. And also, my next question is, why do we have padlocks on the bathrooms, the outside bathrooms at, uh, kids' time?
Whenever the temperatures get below freezing, the doors are left open and it freezes and bustes all our pipes, so we try to padlock them to keep them from leaving the doors open and freezing them all the time. It's the only way I know to try to.
It's just during the winter time?
Well, this one, only when it's gonna be blow-free, yeah, in the winter.
I know somebody called me last week, it wasn't cold that particular day and they said the bathrooms had padlocks and I said I would just ask why 'cause I don't know.
Was it over the Thanksgiving holiday? Cause they named them lock because it was supposed to be cold that weekend?
It was before Thanksgiving. That's not like here.
Um, Councilmember Henderson, District Two.
I don't have nothing this time, but I would like to thank Keith for removing those speed bumps over there in my neighborhood. I thank you so much and the neighbors thank you too.
Well, some of it.
Right, uh, is that all you got, Miss John?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, Councilmember Jacobs, District Three.
Keith, on, uh, on, uh, list. Hey, we, we talked, I talked to you about that stormwater drain over there and, and I forgot about it. Have you had time to go take a look at it and?
We did, I actually had Austin go with me.
Is it bad as it looks or?
It's not an immediate threat, but it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
It's like all the rest of them.
Pipe's come apart, it's come apart there.
It's like all the rest of them.
Well, we need that, we need to put it on the list because, you know, it's just like all the rest of them, it's not gonna get any better.
That's on the list.
It's right there.
We actually looked at it and the one up the other, down off of Davis.
Yeah, one off of Davis, you turn Davis and it's not dipped in it. Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
I, I did a proposal or quote or something, but we did get a chance to look at it, not long ago.
That's, that's all I've got, ma'am.
And I need, I needed to tell you too, that I got, the lady got back in touch with me about those signs and it sent me approved and I should be getting them pretty soon.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Councilmember Alfred, District Four.
Um, at the last meeting, I mentioned, um, a residence that had a big pile of, um, stuff in front of it. Uh, apparently I spoke too quickly because of their next door, so, uh, everything was cleaned up wonderfully well. And so I wanna, uh, thank whoever was responsible for that. Um, there's still a little need for cleanup and, uh, I'm working on trying to find out, of course, it's winter now, so the bushes and weeds have died down, uh, but there are some vacant houses that are kinda ice sores, um, that I hope I can find out a little bit of information about. Um, it's cold now, but I do plan to, um, do a little visiting in the Mill Village just to encourage people so that they will know, um, that we want them to be part of this city. So they'll know that, you know, we are trying to move positively, um, to keep our, our neighborhoods and our cities clean. And thank you for not removing any of the speed bumps.
That's all you got? All right, Councilmember Delishaw, District Five.
Yes, um, Keith, you and I talked last meeting about Pershing Court.
Yes ma'am.
What is the status of that street sign in that street or whatever it is?
It's actually a city street and it is on the right.
Okay, um, next question would be, is there any way you could put a sign, you know, for traffic, um, dead end, anything of that sort?
I would have to check into that, I'm not sure, because it hadn't been closed, I mean, what, what would that, that like if you're going, what is the deal with that?
It doesn't go, I mean, it doesn't go through.
But is there any legal stuff like that, if you're gonna close a street? I think so.
You could put a sign that says dead end, there's no outlet or anything.
Right.
Or no outlet, dead end, no outlet, something like that, you can just put a sign like.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Put it in the form of a motion, no, I mean, dead end, no outlet, or whatever sign you want.
Okay, um, I make a motion then on Pershing Court, I do believe that's the name of that street, um, that we put a dead end, no through traffic, some kind of sign of that nature, um, to keep people from thinking that it goes through to West Point or, you know, that it goes somewhere, when it really doesn't go to West Point.
Okay, all right, you got a motion, uh, for a dead end sign?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, will the roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson? Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delishaw?
Yes.
And then I had, um, are y'all finished, you know, our first meeting, we asked you to pick up trash?
Yes ma'am.
Um, is all that been picked up?
Yes ma'am.
That you know?
We went all the way around one time and got like eleven roll-offs full. And now they have started over, it's been so wet, we haven't been able to pile limbs and get into the limb pile where we put it and they have actually started over on second round.
Okay, what about the old hospital, is that considered commercial, rent, rental property? What's that? There's some old mattresses and a couch out there that's been out there for a while, quite some time.
I might go grab that.
Did get it today, okay, thank you, thank you.
It's a, it's a nonprofit, yeah.
Okay, it's a nonprofit, gotcha. Um, and then the other sign, which Councilman Holly brought this up to me as we were waiting in the line for parade, South Street needs its street sign put back up, was it South Street?
South and West Point.
Oh, you're right, front brick sign?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm waiting on some sign.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, we appreciate you and your department very much.
Thank you. Department head reports, uh, city clerk.
So, um, like Mayor Milton said, we have the schedule for the ice skating rink. If everybody will get with me, um, for whatever day, so that you want to work, um, I will, uh, keep the schedule so we know who's there when and I will get down, like, go down there and get everybody started every day and kind of know the processes and things for that. Um, the other thing that we have is the dump truck. It did not, um, get the reserve that we've had for it on gut deals. Um, we have an offer from Harmon Engineering of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then they will also include, um, twenty hours of a driver that way in between us selling the truck and being able to get another one, if we were to need something done, they will send somebody up here with the truck to help us out, so we're not left, um, without a truck. And so we can get a new one ordered. And so with that, um, the grand total would be two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Two thirty-one thousand, six hundred and?
Twenty-five.
And twenty hours of work with the dump truck is a lot.
Mm-hmm.
A lot.
That's a lot of work.
And that truck was heavily used, we used, we hauled a lot of it.
Ma'am, what was that, two hundred and what now, sorry? So the monetary offer is the two twenty-eight, three seventy-five. And then if you add in the hours that they're offering, that would be a value of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to accept the bid? Two hundred and?
Twenty-eight.
Two hundred and twenty-eight?
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five.
Motion to accept the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three seventy-five from Harmon Engineering with the service, the additional twenty hours of service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote?
Discussion.
Yes, yes.
What, do you remember what the offer we got on gut deals was?
Two fifteen, was the size of that?
I guess my only question, Keith, do you think that's about as good as we're gonna be able to do on that truck?
It is, I mean, when you shop it on gut deals, it went all over worldwide.
Right, right.
And that's a fair offer. The use we got out of it, I could lease one, don't you worry about that, and what they're gonna reimburse us on.
That's all I have.
Plus we got, I mean, do we have another payment coming up on that?
No.
Okay.
I had the motion, then I get the second, I did get the second, uh, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delishaw?
Yes.
And then we did this slightly backwards, but, um, we also need to surplus the truck.
Oh.
It says Resolution thirteen ninety-three, whereas the city of Roanoke, Alabama, has certain property which is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and where a section eleven forty-five fifty-six of the Code of Alabama of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Roanoke, Alabama as follows, that the following property owned by the city of Roanoke, Alabama is not needed for public or municipal purposes, twenty twenty-five Kenworth C eight A D dump truck. The mayor and city clerk being in hereby are authorized and directed to dispose of the property owned by the city of Roanoke, Alabama as described in section one.
All right, do, is there any discussion? Do I have a motion? We don't need the system, do I have a motion?
I'm going to, we have Resolution thirteen ninety-three declaring the dump truck a surplus.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delishaw?
Yes.
Not all.
That's all you got? Um, Keith, streets and maintenance.
I think we've about done everything I had, except I would like to redo the, the dump truck, like the lease program for the thirteen months to purchase another one on that program. Because we got a ton of use out of it and just about most of the money back. And then probably if I told them, I think it'd be like February before I could get a replacement.
And with the landfill opening back hopefully soon, you really gonna need that truck, is that, that?
Yes, it saves two men, two trucks, and a lot of time because to haul the dirt that we, it would take us about four trips with two trucks to haul what that one truck can do. You can do it probably three days what you would do in two to three weeks with us now.
And, um, Madam Clerk, if you, if you would, you and I discussed this about the price of the truck.
Yes, um, the new trucks have gone down around ten thousand dollars. So, um, she has asked for like the particular specs that we want, but it should be around two hundred and twenty for a new one, where we paid two thirty for the last one.
And that's what hers on the sale?
On the sale, and so the new ones have gone down.
Actually you can buy a new one cheaper than, you can buy the huge, it doesn't happen very often.
No.
Um, it, uh, with, I didn't bring my budget in here, but was that a budget that was, is it, is not in that budget?
It's not in the budget, but the, um, the way the program works with the thirteen months, um, which the last time our timing kinda got off on when the truck was delivered, but you're supposed to have the month, um, like, cause we have to keep it for three hundred and sixty-six days and so then you have those weeks to sell it before you have to make the payment, is the way that it's supposed to work.
So basically we'd have a, a year and a day before we would pay a dime.
Yes.
Right.
What y'all think? Discuss?
I think Keith needs a truck and if this is the best option, I think we should do it.
Well, I forgot what the dollar figure was that worked out, but it wasn't much per month that that truck cost to?
I wanna say around sixteen hundred a month.
Yeah, it, it wasn't much.
I don't know, it compares up.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have to wait and try to find somebody to haul us gravel when we need it to put on the road or something, we can go and get it. And I think we've even hauled some to the utility board when they need some to help out.
Do y'all have any questions?
This is through truck works, right?
Yes, same.
Um, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we will give, uh, permission to go ahead and order the truck to, for delivery for February.
I'll make, I'll second that one. All in favor, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delishaw?
Yes.
Keith, got it very much. Keith, you got it.